I want to welcome everybody to the Rules, Election, Intergovernmental Relations, and Neighborhood Committee. We have a quorum. I'm joined by Mr. Weezer and Mr. Harris Dawson. Mr. Clerk, why don't, and this is a special meeting, why don't we start off with the appointment to the Ethics?
Item number five is a communication from the city attorney relative to the appointment of Ms. Andrea Sheridan Ordin to the City Ethics Commission for the term ending June 30th, 2021.
Okay. And then what I think I'm gonna do, I have some multiple cards, so I'm gonna have those people come up and speak for two minutes on their items. So even though we're going to item five now, when I call up the speakers, they can speak, they'll have two minutes to speak to their items. In fact, we'll give them three minutes, Mr. City Attorney, and we'll start off with Mr. Herman. Sergeant, could you move that chair that's in the center? Can we move that chair? Would you quit disrupting the meeting? We're coming to get you. Thank you.
What was the item, sir?
You have three minutes.
On all of them?
On all of them.
All right. Now that we're talking about sexism, we got all these women, Ms. Overstein, Ms. Dehan, Ms. Leviason, DA Ms. Murray, and Ms. Melissa, but Ms. Ordin doesn't know that, that she's under the rule of Jose Weezer, sexual crimes on the job. So we have to make sure that our ethics are not on Francine Gaudoy's subject in City Hall anymore.
Look, would you stay on the subject?
Yeah, I'm talking about the sexist.
No, you stay on the subject, Mr. Herman.
It deals with the city attorney's relative appointment of Ms. Andrea Sheridan. Now, Ms. Sheridan isn't aware of all the sexy things that go on at City Hall, so I'm advising the public of her protection.
This deals with her appointment to the Ethics Commission. Would you stay on subject? This is my, this is your last warning.
And then on Measure relative to the proposed Homeless H, when I was in Van Nuys this past Friday, I talked about good things, how Measure H is a no to H, no to Measure 1, no to Measure 2, no to Measure 3, and no to Measure 4, police potential pensions, because our rank and file need their raises now, Herbie. You see, when I stick to the Measure ballot, all I'm talking about homelessness, I've only been homeless nine years, Herbie. Remember what I said in the L.A. Times this weekend about the tenants in Hollywood? They're being put in a homeless situation now. Pretty pathetic, huh? Really pathetic, taking people out of their home and making them homeless in Hollywood. But no one seems to care other than the advocate. See, I've become a powerful advocate because they put me in the newspaper now, Herbie. Herman versus LAPD investigation, remember that? Threat Management Unit? Ask Weezer, he knows about Threat Management Unit. And what about the TROs on Measure, on the Measure of proposed homelessness? Such a reduction, such a prevention, housing and facility bonds? No way. We got more common sense, you voters. Vote no on Measure H, vote no on Measure 1, vote no on Measure 2, vote no on Measure 3, and to you, Mr. Santana, let them know, do a check and balance, there's not enough coffers to steal from. The only coffer Herman, AKA asshole, belongs to is a home. And going now to item number three, I got 10 seconds, 11, 9. Measure relative to proposed charter amendment to change various aspects of governance and management oversight, we need the FBI to investigate these issues.
Thank you, Mr. Previn.
It is Eric Previn from Studio City, and this is about the appointment of Andrea Sheridan Ordin to the role of Ethics Commissioner here at the City of Los Angeles. It's Mr. Michael Fuer, the city attorney's appointment. The previous guy who served was Nathan Hockman, who was appointed by Tru Tannich, so this is that seat. The city attorney gets an appointment, as does other bigwigs. Ordin is a tireless veteran, needless to say. She was a county council, as you all know. She worked closely with Leela Kapoor, who migrated over here to be the city attorney's number two. This is a love fest, and Gail Coretts gets a lot of credit for shuffling around early in the morning. Now, I want to just say about the role. First of all, Ordin and I have a funny history, because when she was county council, there was an article in the Wall Street Journal that came out immediately after our thing entitled "Man Up." It was about what you do in a debate. Herb Weston, imagine if a woman said to you, "Come on, Mr. Weston, man up," what would you say in response? My response was something clever like, "Maybe after Pilates," you know, which was a joke that got printed. But she was a little surprised by that, and then I took him to federal court, obviously, and they offered me some money. I turned it down, and here we are today, sir. I'm a county watchdog, a city watchdog. She is a, she left quickly. Now, the thing is, she went to a firm that's very well-respected called Morgan Lewis Bakiis. Certainly, Mr. Fuer would have an eye on such a firm in the future. This is a firm that represented Hockman, so kudos to the firm for replacing, there are only five City Ethics Commission seats in Los Angeles, that firm managed to get one attorney replaced by the other. This is a coup in some sense. So the question is, is she right for the job? Hockman, obviously, was mired in controversy, as you recall, the City Watch, I wrote about how he served on a hearing commission for a guy who had challenged Englander, who he gave money to. It's a very bad, stinky little story over there, but this is a new, fresh era, and that's the good news. So is Ordin the right one for us? Well, when she was in office, Baca was sheriff, indicted, Nogez was assessor, indicted, and now, years later, after a tireless fight by those of us in the community, the New York Times is looking closely at the Knabe stuff regarding county golf in the New York Times. You saw that on December 15th. So, coming to the city of Los Angeles, it's a little bit like we're getting from the county pond somebody to sit on the Ethics Commission filter, but the county pond is something like the Rio, waters of Rio de Janeiro, so I'm a little worried in that sense. The, how is the Ethics Commission doing on their own terms, and what could she bring in terms of a fresh, new voice? Well, one problem is, I mentioned the man up, there are now five women serving on the commission. I feel that men, there are 14 on this council, are not represented. I don't know, I have a daughter, I'm very pro-feminist, equal rights, obviously, but I just feel like one man, I don't know, maybe, maybe Ordin, who is very smart, I always say she, like Fuer, is probably smart enough to know better than to take this position, not being clear on all of your various shenanigans, maybe she should turn it down.
Thank you. Thank you. Your time's expired. Thank you, Mr. Previn. Mr. Spindler?
So, here we have the Ethics Commission. No men on the Ethics Commission, just women, Andrea Alakarn Sheridan Ordin. How nice. Welcome back, Andrea. Welcome back to City Hall. Same person, different name, different day. So, the Ethics Commission took a LAPD cop for the first time ever on the Ethics Commission, Sergeant Parker, who made that Django Unchained arrest, and that Ethics Commission tried to fine this guy $10,000 for doing his job as a police officer. The Ethics Commission had never done this before, so the Ethics Commission is tainted. The Ethics Commission has been used as a vehicle against political and whistleblower opponents of the City Hall machine. And Andrea Sheridan Ordin, you want to take this job? You're engaging in a criminal conspiracy, Ms. Sheridan Ordin. Do not take this job. Look into the Sergeant Parker manner, talk to activists, don't talk to Charlie Beck, don't talk to anybody on this panel, talk to outside counsel first about this Ethics Commission, because you got a real liability problem. If you get held for punitive damages, you could lose your home, even if you're paying your mortgage, if you get exempted off of city liability. Andrea Sheridan Ordin, you are taking a job on a panel that just persecuted a peace officer doing his job. This is fucking disgusting, and we're not gonna tolerate it. Most cops are damn good cops, it's just that you have a management problem, and the Ethics Commission has been decided to be used as a vehicle for Charlie Beck to retaliate when he can't do it any other way. Vote no. And finally, these four ballot measures, I'll repeat what I said Friday, no! No on the Measure 1, no on the ballot measure, no on number 3, no on number 4. You do not want to vote for anything. Anything City Hall feeds you on a ballot? No, 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 no on these four ballots. No, 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 it's wrong. No, 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 no to new taxes, no, 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 no to feeding money to a city that does not understand. It retaliates against whistleblowers. No, 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 no. The police and fire pension system, you do not want to be put in the airports. Keep yourselves separate, you have your own police chief. Don't be fooled. Vote no, 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 no. Thank you.
Thank you. Joanne? And Joanne only has one card, so go ahead. Good to see you.
Good morning. Good to see you all. I'm Joanne Yovanikar, I'm from West Hills Neighborhood Council, but I'm also the budget representative, budget advocate for the Southwest San Fernando Valley. As far as the homeless issue is concerned, I agree, we do have a significant homeless problem. However, it shouldn't be on the backs of the L.A. taxpayers. This is a national problem. It is a statewide problem, and they should be the ones who are helping fund this, not the taxpayers of the city of Los Angeles. Yes, we do have some responsibility, but I don't want this to come down as a haven for the homeless from across the nation. You know, Los Angeles has a great weather and a lot of things, a lot of attractions. However, we don't want it to be an attraction for the homeless from around the country. And I feel that if we start doing this in, as the taxpayers, then we're gonna have an influx of homeless people, and we're having a hard time taking care of our own, so we need to look at this very carefully, and I have advocated to say no on this, because there is no plan, we haven't declared a state of emergency statewide, we haven't declared a state of emergency federally. So we need to get those in place and a distinctive plan in place before we can go ahead with the ballot measure. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's, I don't, Mr. Clerk, do you have any more public comment cards? Okay, so I'm gonna close, that's the last card that I had, so I'm gonna close public comment for today's hearing. Now, if we could get our proposed appointee to come forward? It is always a pleasure to see Ms. Holt and the gang. I hope all is going well for you, and it's a pleasure to meet you. I don't, if you would, take a moment and kinda tell us a bit about yourself and what you bring to the, this commission, which is a very important commission, one that I believe this committee works very well with, we have the highest respect for, and we try to partner whenever we can. So we are excited about your proposed appointment, and we want to try to keep the commission operating at full strength. So with that said, welcome and tell us a little bit about yourself.
Thank you. Thank you very much, and thank you for the kind words in the beginning of this session. I am a lawyer, I have been a lawyer for 50 years. I started in the State Attorney General's Office as a deputy, doing consumer work and civil rights and criminal briefs. I've been in most areas of government, my first 25 years was entirely government, both in the Attorney General's Office, I was the number three person in the District Attorney's Office, and was appointed by President Carter to be the first woman United States attorney here in the Central District of California. I like to say sometimes that I ran out of governments, and then did go to, as you have heard, the firm of Morgan Lewis and Bakiis, where I served for 19 years, various volunteer assignments, with great privilege to be on the Los Angeles Police Commission, and have spent a lot of my time since being county council, assisting Hilda Solis in her office the first four months of her transition period, and various volunteer assignments, and was very happy to accept the nomination from city attorney Michael Fuer to serve on the Ethics Commission. It's very good to be back in the city.
Well, I tell you, when we look at the appointments or the current commissioners, it's like an all-star lineup. I mean, the Ethics Commission has always had talent, but it's like an all-star lineup now, so you would be joining the A-team, so to speak. So how long were you with the county council?
I was there, as also you heard earlier today, a brief time. It was two years, full of many important issues, and I was very pleased to have served there and work with some really very fine lawyers over that period of time.
And you helped Ms. Supervisor Solis kind of get things started when she was elected supervisor?
That's right, that's right, and enjoyed that very much, too, helped some in the hiring process and setting up some of the systems.
I had the pleasure to serve with her when I was in the legislature. Any other questions, Mr. Weezer?
Just a great appointment here from recommendation from the city attorney's office, with giving all your background, and it just comes together in a nice fashion here for the Ethics Commission. You know how the city functions, you know the ins and outs, you know the substance, so I think this is a great, great appointment, so fully supportive.
And I will, one other thing that I have been doing is, I have been teaching adjunct, both at, right now at Pepperdine Law School, on government lawyering, and so some of these issues are issues that I'm currently working on and studying, so I thank you very much.
Okay, so, since there are no other questions, then without objection, we will recommend Ms. Ordin's appointment to the full council, and that will be tomorrow, August 9th.
I look forward to being here.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, why don't we run through the other items?
Certainly, sir. Item number one is a ballot measure relative to a proposed homeless reduction and prevention housing and facilities bond. Item number two is a ballot measure relative to a proposed initiative establishing affordable housing and labor standards related to city planning. Ballot, pardon me. Item number three is a ballot measure relative to a proposed charter amendment to change various aspects of the governance, management, oversight, and operations of the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power. Item number four is a ballot measure relative to a proposed charter amendment regarding the enrollment of airport, airport peace officers in the fire and police pension system.
Okay, thank you. Why don't I get the clerk, a rep from the clerk's office, and do we have a rep from the city attorney's office? Come on up, come on down. Good to see you, Harriet. For the record, why don't you guys, well, first of all, good morning, why don't you identify yourselves for the record?
Certainly. My name is Myra Puchalski, I work for City Clerk Election Division.
Good morning, Harriet Trevetti from the city attorney's office.
Okay, you know what? I think what we should do, Harriet, is kinda go through who signed up to do what, and maybe you can walk us through, you know, the guidelines that we as a committee have to stay within to make sure that we do this properly.
What's before you today is, are the argument, the designation of the argument authors for and against the four ballot measures that are gonna be on the November ballot. Myra has the list of people who have applied for and against each of the ballot measures, and she can read those off, but I'll frame it very quickly by saying, the election code provides that the council president, if there are multiple applicants, chooses the applicant that is to be the designated argument author for and against a ballot measure. The code lets sets forth also a list of preferences that the council president must abide to, including, first, giving preference to any elected officer who applied, second, to any appointed officer, third, to any bona fide association of citizens, and fourth, to any individual voters, and within those groupings, preference to those who are generally recognized as the public advocates or opponents of the measure. One additional note is for the initiative, since one of these is an initiative, the code requires that the proponents of the initiative be designated as the authors of the argument in favor of the initiative. Myra can give you the list of those who have applied to write an argument in favor and an argument against the measure.
Okay, why don't we start off then with item one? I believe that's the homelessness bond.
So, the folks, the individuals who have applied to write an argument in favor are council member Weezer, council member Coretts, G Tobin, M Alvidarez, and E Bulck. Those who have signed up or requested to write an argument against are J Humphreyville, M Rayevic, and the California Taxpayers Action Network.
Okay, now let's go back to those in favor. Weren't there representative from the United Way and the L.A. Chamber? Because it's my understanding that the elected officials are going to pass and afford the community folk.
There, yeah, we'd received information that the council members had withdrawn their applications, and also to clarify, Gary Tobin is writing on behalf of the Los Angeles Area Chamber of Commerce, and Elise Buick on behalf of the United Way of Greater Los Angeles for that Proposition H, the homelessness bond.
Okay, so, where relates to the argument in favor, I would, members recommend that, well, I'd wanna see if you're comfortable with that, but let's take a moment before we put all this together and talk about those who are against.
I'm sorry.
Go right ahead.
Just summarize again, for those after the withdrawals, who remains as for for the homeless?
G Tobin, M Alvidarez, and E Buick.
And just to summarize for against, it was California Taxpayer Action Network and Association, and then two individuals, J Humphreyville and M Rayevic.
Okay, and there's some kind of, is it a preset priority, or do we just choose, or how does that actually work?
So the code does set a list of preference that the committee and the council president are to adhere to, and that is, as I'd mentioned, first, giving preference to any elected officer, since there isn't any at this point, second, giving preference to an appointed officer of the city, there aren't any of those, so that goes to preference to an organization of citizens before any individual voter.
And so the group that would qualify for that would be what, the Taxpayer Association Network?
That's correct, for the argument against.
Okay, then let's move down to item two. And who do we have?
So for the affordable housing measure, we have A Wilkerson as a proponent, and that's the only person who's applied to be a proponent.
Okay, and those against?
E Blaney, the Yucca Argyle Tenants Association, the Coalition for Jobs and Attainable Housing, and the L.A. Tenants Union.
Okay, so now, the Coalition for Jobs and Attainable Housing, there has to be a person connected with that, and so who is that? And would they, out of the list, basically be the top of the list?
Yes, that's correct. The organization applies, there's a designated representative, Tim Piaski, who has listed his name as a designated representative of that organization, but you would, if you would choose an organization, you designate the organization as the author, and he's a responsible party for that organization.
Okay, and is there a reason that we might go with that organization over the, there was one other organization you mentioned?
Correct. So, Yucca Argyle Tenants Association was one, and then the L.A. Tenants Union as well.
And so is there something that would give this Coalition for Jobs some kind of leg up?
It would be a determination on the part of the council president and the committee whether, which of these organizations is generally seen as a major public advocate or opponent, it's within your discretion.
Okay, then, and members just, you know, tap me if you want to ask a question. Let's move down to the third item.
So for DWP, we have F Pickle in favor, and against, we've got J Dillard, P Barron, W Dean, E Chimerinsky, Nate Holden, Fix L.A. Coalition, B Prizeluck, and C Everts.
Okay, help us understand the, I've heard, I know that, we know the Fix L.A. Coalition. I don't know if I know if there were any other groups, and would they, would it be appropriate for them to be, get priority?
Yes, there's an organization that's comprised of other groups, or has also taken a position publicly against the measure, that's the organization that would be given preference under the code.
Okay, and who's, who would be the signer, if you will, or the name attached to the coalition?
The representative designated in their application is Reverend William Smart Jr.
Okay, I think we all know him as well. That would bring us to item four.
No one has applied to write an argument in favor or against the pension measure.
Okay, so, members, you know, given what's before us and the reports that we've received from the city attorney and the clerk's office, I would say that on item one, that we would want to, for the for side, go with Gary Tobin, representing the Los Angeles Chamber of Commerce, Elise Buick, the United Way. For the against, given the legal recommendations, we would go with the California Tax Association Network with G Rick Marshall, designated as their lead person, I guess. Then, item three, yes?
No, go ahead.
Item three, the DWP ratepayer advocate, Dr. Frederick Pickle, for, and then the argument against, I think you, given what you've said, that the fair way to do it would be to go with the Fixed L.A. Coalition, a coalition that's recognized in this city for years, and their lead person, for lack of a better word. of a better word, I'll call him lead person, would be Reverend William Smart, Jr. And members, on item four, since there have been no submissions, then I would recommend we leave that blank as well. So any comments, Mr. Weezer?
Thank you.
Wait, I skipped number two. I skipped number two. Thank you. Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, so on number two, we would go with, it's, and I don't think we have a, at least for the four side, there's not a lot of choices, so we would have to go with the, Mr. Wilkerson. On the against side, given the conversation that we had, you would think the Coalition for Jobs and Attainable Housing would be the, the group against with Tim, is, how do you pronounce his last name? Piaski?
That's correct.
Okay, so the, we have the for, Mr. Wilkinson, and then against, the recommendation would be for the Coalition of, for Jobs and Attainable Housing. Now, and Mr. Weezer?
Thank you. So when we list the names of the individuals and the organization they are affiliated with, do we put their titles, or is it just, for example, Gary Tobin, Chamber of Commerce? Or is it Gary Tobin, president and CEO of the Chamber of Commerce?
So today, we're, the council, committee is designating the, the organization or individual that's the author. The author then drafts the argument and obtains signatures from nine other individuals or groups to sign, and they can choose how they designate themselves.
They choose their own designation, whether it's just the organization or they put their title in as well, right?
Correct. The only caveat is, in an organization is named, at least one principal officer of the organization has to have their name on the ballot argument and sign for it.
Define a principal.
The president, vice president, an officer, corporate officer, CEO.
Okay. Mr. Harris-Dawson, you good? Okay, then, since there are no other questions, then without objection, we should approve these recommendations and instruct the clerk to notify the authors immediately. And it's my understanding, and I want to verify that, this, with the two of you, this is the final action, the city council, there's no need for a city vote or anything like that. So once this committee acts, then it's a done deal.
That's correct. The code provides that the council president selects, and with the affirmance of the Rules Committee, and no council action is required.
Okay, so let it be written, so let it be done. All right. Mr. Clerk, any more work before, or items before this committee?
No, sir. That clears the desk.
Questions, members? Then this committee's adjourned.